Give the technical part to somebody else.
Okay. No problem.
Meanwhile. Okay.
Okay, so. Well, welcome to today's session and my name is Kamby. And I'm very happy today because we are going to have a session on a project that most of us are not familiar with. When you call Wikifunctions, I have no idea about what it is. But then I know that Sanita will help us to break it down gradually. You know, for us, we are just like in nursery school students and would first of all learn the ABCs and then we see how we are going to integrate our own languages. And Hughes, he's going to teach us how to do it. So I'm going to pass the mic to Quet and then Quet will pass it to the next person until it lands back at Sanita, who will take over the whole, you know, session for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kamby. I don't know if you can hear me.
Louden.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Luca, it's good to have you with us this evening, Martinelli. Thank you very much for joining. So my name is Friday Quet and I'm a member of the Tiap Wikimedia user group. So we are co-organizing the mentoring session together with Kamby. So I'm happy to be here. So at this point, we'd just like to take a short introduction before we begin. So hand over the microphone back to Buddy and introduce yourself. Here is Mr. Buddy, because you can barely hear him. Hello. Good evening. Thank you. Yes, it's Buddy Shapu and a member of Tiap Wikimedia. Nice to be here. Pass the mic to Wayham. Wayham, you're welcome.
Okay, good evening all. My name is Wayham Sinestar, a member of Tiap Wikimedia user group. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayham. Please pass the mic to Inday Alain. Please kindly introduce yourself. Okay, Buddy, please mute your mic. Okay, so TFK kindly introduce yourself. TFK, are you there? Okay, so I'll just return the microphone back to Kamby as he introduces our presenter for today.
Okay, thank you very much, Quet and all present. Out. So, Sanita, are you sharing the screen already?
Yes, I'm sharing the screen.
Okay, okay. So that when you introduce yourself, I want to be seeing your face always.
Yeah, I know that's, I mean, it's not that bad that you can't see my face. That's it. I see my face every day and I don't think it's a problem if I don't see it.
No, we want to see your face.
Well, but you have also to watch the presentation because there are a lot of things that I'm going to show and unfortunately, yeah.
The time is.
Yeah, you have to decide at some point. Or we can put the mosaic view and have all of us.
Okay, no problem. So you introduce yourself and then you take over.
Okay, so hi, everyone. I'm Luca Martinelli, also known as Sanita. This is my username on the Wikimedia projects since 2006. I'm an Italian Wikipedia administrator on Italian Wikipedia. Also, I've been administrator on Wikidata for 13 years and I stopped doing that like a month ago or something. And then since 2021, I work for the Wikimedia Foundation as community liaison for several projects, among which Wikifunctions. That's the newest project launched by the Wikimedia Foundation. And I'm going to talk about briefly also another project, about another project called Abstract Wikipedia that's combined with Wikifunctions that will build on the existing Wikifunctions project. But about that, we will get later. So without further ado, I think I can go on with my presentation, right? Perfect, okay, just give me a second. There you go. So first of all, a little bit of an introduction. And let's start from the beginning. Our mission is to give free access and sharing the sum of all the knowledge. We are in this together and this is what we believe in. This is what I believe since I joined Wikipedia and this is probably also what you're also believing, sharing knowledge in your language. Unfortunately, after more than, after around 25 years of work, knowledge is still distributed in an uneven manner among the 300 and plus versions of Wikipedia. There are versions with millions of well-curated articles and there are versions where articles are no longer desktops. Oh, hi, Nicola. Sorry, one thing, if you have questions, please interrupt me at any moment. But if you're doing that in chat, then you need, you will need a little bit of time because I need to read first and then because I'm switching between tabs for the presentation. So to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, here is a comparison between English Wikipedia, which is the largest Wikipedia version, and two African-language Wikipedias, Hausa and Dagbani, that are also two of our focus languages for Wikifunctions. More on that later. You can see the difference in the statistics and you can think of the difference in outcomes that this implies. Also, you know about this. You know about this because also Tiap Wikipedia is smaller than English Wikipedia and you face the very same problems that Hausa and Dagbani Wikipedia have in terms of being before, maybe being behind English Wikipedia. But here's another example of uneven distribution of knowledge. So this is a visual query from Wikidata. Of all the articles about politicians, we only have one Wikipedia article. Now, as you can see, there is a concentration of biographies skewed towards certain parts of the world, especially Europe, but also Japan or in the United States or Latin America. And there is a profound link between the major language in a country and its Wikipedia version. Japanese articles are mostly linked to Japan. English are mostly related to UK, Ireland, India, US, and so on and so forth. But if you think about it, all Wikipedias share the same principles and the same kind of work to be done. The difference is unfortunately in how many users are empowered to freely share their knowledge on their projects. Wikipedia is known as one of the great repositories on the internet of high-quality, accurate, human-generated, and well-written information-based articles. Our idea is that machines can also help us write those articles with the appropriate conditions. But most importantly, the open web in the era of OpenAI, of artificial intelligence, still needs an accessible edit button so that humans and machines can work together. And here is how Wikifunctions come into play. So far, this is just an introduction. I wanted to be sure that everything is okay and that we are all on the same place. So this is just to give you an idea of where we're starting. Is it anything clear?
Yeah.
Perfect. So what is Wikifunctions? It's the newest Wikimedia project for everyone to collaboratively create and maintain a library of code functions to support the Wikimedia projects and beyond in the world's natural and programming languages. What does it mean? Because this looks very fun, but what does actually mean? So what is, first of all, what is a function? So to explain it very briefly, possibly very incorrectly, but bear with me. A function is something that allows you to transform an input into an output. Think of reversing the order of characters in a word or adding two numbers together or transforming a word into another word because you're using a particular cryptographic code or building a phrase out of words. This is, these are all ideas of functions. And when you think about it, natural language, the language that we use every day is full of functions. Think about converting different measurements in recipes, like US cups into milliliters or making age calculations related to historical events. Or think about the rules behind the creation of grammatical forms that can be more or less predictable given a specific language. Now, for Italian, I'm talking about Italian because it's my mother language. We have grammatical rules. We have rules about using a particular article with a particular word if it starts with a particular letter. But think of languages that have cases like German, like Latin, like Serbian. Now, this also, this can also be turned into functions. You can do language functions to add the clension of these words into the various cases that the language has. All of this can be stored in Wikifunctions and the site is already here. It was launched officially on July 28 of 2023 and it's the latest Wikimedia project to be launched. So let's start finally with taking a look at what a function on Wikifunction really is. This is an example that is called Add Integers. That is basically making the sum of two numbers. Every function on the left side, you can see it, you can see the blue box that shows, that showcase the part that I'm talking about, has a label, a description, and the possibility to have multiple aliases that are freely editable in all languages, like what already happens with Wikidata Items. So think of a Wikidata item. The same thing happens with Wikidata, well, sorry, with Wikifunctions function. You can edit the title, you can edit the description, you can edit the aliases. You can do all of this in all the languages that Wikimedia Foundation supports. On the right side, there is an input section at the top of the function that allows to run the function and get an output. In this case, you input two numbers and then you click on Run Function button and that gives you the result of addition. So if you put 1 and 1, you get 2 as a result. Below, there is the, below the input section, we have the implementation section, which is the most technical part of a function. This part lists the possible ways in which code that actually, in which the code actually implements the function. There could be more implementations for the same functions, meaning that there could be several ways to implement a function. And for now, we can only have three different types of functions: Python, JavaScript, and Composition. What is Composition? We will see it later. So just let's go another bit with what a function is, how it is composed. Finally, below the implementation, we have the Test section where users can create tests to see if the implementations work correctly, like 2 plus 2 makes 4 or minus 5 plus minus 5 makes minus 10, and so on and so forth. Note that you can also do tests that don't work. Maybe you can do something like plus 2 plus 2 makes 3 and then the test says, no, it fails and it should fail because it gives you the wrong number. So you can definitely do whatever you want. Ah, yeah. It's, let's say, okay, if you can't see properly the function, maybe I can show it better later when we will do a little workaround on Wikifunctions. Or I can share with you the PDF and send it to you so that you can read the things. Apologies, unfortunately, I cannot make a little zoom at this point. So let's start with the implementations. So this is the implementation in Python. As you can see, let's see if I can actually make it.
Sorry, sorry much.
Yeah, Luca.
Can you please zoom in your screen a little?
Yeah, that's the point. I cannot unfortunately zoom the screen because it's a presentation. Let me see if I can, if you can wait just a second. There you go.
Awesome.
Probably this way is better. Okay, so you can see, try this function, Left integer, Right integer, plus 2 plus 2. These are the implementations, you can see. Python, JavaScript, and Composition. And these are the tests. As I said, this, sometimes it passes, sometimes it fails, sometimes it's done by default that they must fail. So this is how the implementation in Python looks, which is being just the sum of two numbers. It's very simple, it's very, it's very easy to show. So that's how, that's how it is. And this is in JavaScript. Again, very basic code that takes care of the implementation. More complex functions, of course, require more complex code. Now, just give me a second again to return to slideshow. Are freely, is freely editable and has labels, description, and aliases. So it's every page of Wikifunctions, every part of Wikifunctions has labels, descriptions, and aliases, like Wikidata Items basically. Now, a more interesting case of implementation is Composition. Composition is not a programming language but combines existing, usually more basic functions together to achieve the goal of the given function. Now, one thing about Composition is since it is made of other functions in the system and each function can have labels in multiple languages, we can actually also read and write this function in another language, in this case, Italian. But it can be in German, it can be in Tiap, it can be in any kind of language you want. So in this thing, this means that for many languages, this is the first time that you will be able to read and write functions without needing to know English as a prerequisite. I want to be clear about this. What we want to do is for you guys to actually create a composition function, starting from Tiap labels. You can translate the labels in Tiap and then somebody else who knows how to do this kind of things can reuse your labels to understand what a function about, what an implementation is about, what this thing particularly is about, and create more functions based on your languages. What we want to do is something that, in a way, doesn't use English as a prerequisite. Knowing Python, knowing JavaScript, knowing Lua, knowing Scribunto, knowing every programming language needs English as a prerequisite. Wikifunctions does not. This is what we are trying to achieve here. I hear there is a question, yes?
Um, my question is, the functions that we're going to create, are they based on the words of the language? Just like a wiki tongues, I mean, just like wiki data lexemes or items? And, okay, that's just the question.
So if I got it correctly, basically, the function is, as anybody, as any Wikidata item, you can decide to make a function about creating a complete phrase in Tiap. Like, this person is born in this city and you want to do this function in Tiap language. What you do is, of course, the implementation, of course, is made with programming language. So if you want to do it in Python or JavaScript, unfortunately, you need to know English. But if you want to do a composition, you can base yourself on other functions. If they have the Tiap labels, you can use those labels, you can use those functions, reading in your own language and reusing them to compose what you want to do as a function. I hope that I answered. If not, please. So, but yeah, it's basically, it basically works as Wikidata Items, basically. It's a bit more complicated than that, I should say, unfortunately, because it's still a very, very complicated, very technical project. But it works like, but the pages work like Wikidata Items or Lexemes, yes. And also Wikifunctions reuses Wikidata Items and Lexemes. But this is, this is, probably it's what I wanted to hear. Yeah, exactly. This is what I would, this is what I was about to tell you about, which is what you can do with Wikifunctions, which is to, of course, create functions, implementations, and test cases. You can use a huge list of types of functions, we will see that later. You can call Wikidata Items and Lexemes in a function. So if you want to say Albert Einstein has been born in Ulm in Tiap Wikipedia, in Tiap language, you can actually create a function in Tiap language that calls that particular, those particular items and combine from there. And then, of course, you can also reuse in third-party apps, tools, gadgets, whatever. The second part, which is calling the functions within Wikipedia articles, within other pages, and using those things is only available for now on Dagbani Wikipedia, 148 dictionaries, and Incubator. Next week, if everything goes well, which is still to be defined, let's say, the number will go up to five Wikipedias because we will add the support for Bengali, Igbo, Hausa, and Malayalam Wikipedia and another 12 dictionaries. And more projects will follow in due time, including Tiap Wikipedia. I also have to update briefly the slide here because there is a mistake. My bad. I should have checked it before that. There's a, one thing is already available and is no longer waiting for it to be added. So, but what is really Wikifunctions about? What we can actually do with Wikifunctions when it's going to be able to be called on Tiap Wikipedia? Just to make an example, let's take a look at Module Age. Who, that is a Lua module that allows you to calculate the age of a person giving as an input a birth date. Module Age is in use in 93 versions of Wikipedia. Now, this means that over 200 Wikipedians do not use this module because they don't have it, meaning it's not a universal module, it's just a very localized module. But its implementation may also vary significantly between versions. On English Wikipedia, the module is periodically maintained and updated in case of need. The documentation is kept updated with the changes. Everything goes well. If you need help, maybe you can actually reach out to the person who made the module or did the changes to the module to ask them what you can do and all of this. On Dagbani Wikipedia, on the contrary, the module was imported in 2021 and then never updated. The documentation is non-existent, meaning that a Dagbani user that wants to use the module must know English, then must know how to reach the documentation on English Wikipedia. And there is the possibility that that documentation refers to a more updated version of the module and not to the version that is updated on Dagbani Wikipedia. And the situation complicates with every other version of Wikipedia. Different names for the module, possibly different names for the parameters, meaning that you cannot freely copy and paste from one language to another. Each module is individually maintained. Some are written from scratch, some copied from arbitrary versions of a module and then forked. Now, this could change, oops, this could change dramatically when Wikifunctions will be able to transclude the age functions. This function will be universally accessible by all Wikimedia projects, also Tiap Wikipedia about this, not only in those who imported the module, but all the Wikimedia projects, all the Wikimedia projects, when it is going to be time, of course. And it will be maintained and updated in one place only instead of a plurality of places. Now, I'll stop here for a moment, just to be sure that everything is okay, that if there are more questions, any suggestions for ideas or any other clarification needed, just let me know. Also, I'll take a little bit of water for me. So. Quet, yes?
Yeah, no, I just want to make comments because.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, everyone is just sitting, looking at the whole thing. So I know, after this slide, Martinelli, I believe we are going to go into like a live practical.
Into live?
Yes, like practical, live practical on how to actually navigate the functions.
Sure. I'm going to be, I'm going to be, I'm going to be another five minutes, probably less, about Wikifunctions because I'm going to talk about you about Abstract Wikipedia, which is going to be the future of Wikifunctions. Now, the final name of the project will not be Abstract Wikipedia. Right now, we're in the middle of a process to define its final name. So let's keep this one for the moment, but it will change in the future. And maybe later I can share with you the link of the contest, just in case. just in case you want to vote on the proposals. Levi, tell me.
Yeah, thank you very much. What I wanted to ask was that, earlier on, we heard from Ian that, okay, that the contents from the Wikimedia lexims, I mean, from the wiki data lexims, although you spoke about it briefly, but I want to get it clear. So, if we're able to actually document, let's say, the Tiap language very well on wiki data, so is it that we're going to import it? You know, is it a place that we click and then we import the content into wiki data, into wiki函數, or how does it work?
I will show you later about this. But basically, the answer is, when you do the... I'll give you, I'll show you, you know, in a moment. Just give me a second. Let me, okay, let's interrupt for a bit and let's do something... Unfortunately, I can do it only in English, because it's the language that I can read better. But, oops. There you go, okay, so... As you can see here, let me make it a little bit bigger, probably. There you go. This is a function for creating a sentence, like Berlin is a city or water is a substance, okay? So, let's say that you want to type Berlin. As you can see, you can already get the very same thing that you get on wiki data. Berlin, federated state, Berlin, family name, Berlin, American synth pop band. Let's go with this one. And I want to do a music band, music group. There you go. It's a, I want to say that Berlin is a musical group. So, as you can see, you can do this for wiki data items or wiki data lexims. It depends, of course, on the function, because there are functions that work with wiki data items, and there are functions that work with wiki data lexims. That is different. But basically, you can use directly an item or a lexim without needing to import anything. You just, it just reads completely, it compiles automatically the thing. And if we want to do the result, there you go, Berlin is a musical group. We created a sentence in English with a function. And this is actually good, because I wanted to, just to bring you this part of the presentation about abstract Wikipedia. So, what is abstract Wikipedia? What will be abstract Wikipedia? Will be a project to allow more people to share in more knowledge and more language by allowing contributors to create and maintain language-independent content, which can be used to generate natural language text in many languages, starting from the functions stored in wiki函數 and data stored in wiki data. What does it mean? It means that we need users like you to create language functions that deal with the peculiarities of natural language. Now, as I'm going to show you, we already have a lot of basic functions that can create plurals of nouns. For example, in English, German, Korean, Igbo, Hausa, or more complicated functions that can output complete sentences in each language, given a particular input, like the function that I showed you in English. We built a complete phrase, a simple phrase, very simple phrase, but a complete phrase, just with a function. We are creating a big, in this case, we are... We created a basic sentence about a music band, that we can create it about someone being born in a particular place, about a particular type of pasta being a food, and so forth. What we are going to do is that we are going to start gently with the natural language generation. With the proper consensus on the wiki data community, we will propose to use our functions to generate wiki data items descriptions, relieving the community from a tedious task that can be accomplished most of the time automatically by reading the data already present in the item, and of course, with the possibility to use that automatically generated description as a base for a more complete, human-made description. Which is actually, this actually got showed this week, actually, in our weekly update. So, this is actually, this is literally happened this week, and I can show you this week about several examples. Our vision of the future is to create complete sentences based on wiki函數, language functions, and wiki data data about a subject that in turn can be used by Wikimedia communities to generate placeholder articles when an article is missing, or as a starting point for the generation of new articles. This will be a decision that will be left to the discretion of the Wikipedia communities. If, just to be clear, if Tiap Wikipedia wants this thing to be shown as the placeholder articles where an article is missing, for us, is fine. If you don't want to show it, but you want to use it as a start to create an article in Tiap Wikipedia, that's also fine. This is your decisions. This is your decision, not ours. We're absolutely fine with each idea. Of course, we will be more happy if you use the functions, that's it. But this is going, how you use it, is your decision. The benefit of this decision, of this vision, is that like wiki data, every update or correction to existing data will reflect accordingly in the resulting text. In this case, if the year of Marie Curie's Nobel Prize in Chemistry was originally wrong, and somebody fixes it, the correction will reflect in the text too, without the need for local users to intervene. In summary, this is what we are building. A future where machines, based on functions and data, can help humans to generate new Wikipedia articles and help bridge the gap between versions. This brings us to the very goal that we were talking about at the beginning: enabling more access in more languages to the sum of all human knowledge with an edit button. Now, the real question is, will you join us? So, thank you very much for your attention, for your questions so far. This is the end of my presentation, that I will be sharing with you guys, of course. I'll send it to Camby, and then he will share it with everybody that wants to take a look at it. Also, you made me realize that first, I have to check that particular mistake that I made. And so, just give me, just give me a couple of hours, maybe. Wait, Sylvester, yes?
Wait, you're muted.
Wait, you want to ask a question? Yes. Okay, Martinelli, please, just continue.
So, let me share again. So, this is going to be probably an addition that I will make to my presentation, which is, this is a page, wiki函數 catalogue. I'll share the link with you guys in chat. There you go. This is the entrance to look where the functions are. You can search them in the search tab, of course, or you can go here with a manually curated catalogue of functions. Whenever a new function is added, usually is added also there. And you can browse all the different types of functions that we have, like this string operations. We can see if something is a palindrome, like this one. It is a palindrome. Or, I don't remember, yeah, you can also add, you can also add words to something if something is missing. That works a lot with lots of languages that adds suffixes to the end of a word to make plurals, or something like that. Ah, there you go. This is actually a cipher. No, not this one. Well, anyway. Or you can see natural language. As you can see, we have here lots of languages, except Tiap for the moment. So, if you know how to, if you know your language, we can get in contact, and we can try to get some function in Tiap, and maybe start the part about creating languages, sentences in your languages. Again, let's continue with English, because it's, unfortunately, it's easier for me to create something. Let me see if this works with lexim, let's see. Okay, so let's, no, this is just a, this is just a function to create plurals. So, you put something like apple, and it gives you apples as a result. I'll make it a little bit more big, just to show. As you can see, there are also other possibilities, like plural of woman is women, child is children. In this case, it's failed, because of course, if we go to this particular test, it doesn't pass as a trial. It doesn't pass as a function. But it returns children, because it's a different, it's a different function. Another thing that we can do is color. So, you can put, you can put the, let's see, like, like the code of a color, and it returns, what is this? Nope. There you go. It returns the particular thing about the color, and so on. But also, I wanted to show you one thing, which is going to be in our latest update, which is, as you can see, the short description, like, English, a short description for album. So, we can say, I don't know. This is an album of an Italian singer. And we can make this into a different, we can create a short description in several languages, as you can see. Let's try with Spanish. Yeah, that's actually, this is English. It doesn't work, oops, sorry. Let's try in the English. There you go, and you get it, and you get it. Or, let's try it in German. Nope, it still gives English. All right, because this is English short description, I'm sorry. For the German is actually this one. So, apologies. As you can see, you can enter anything you want in here as a, and then you get a result. Album von Sergio Camariere 2002. And then you can get it in Uzbek, or in Swedish, and in other languages. So, this is right now what we're working on in terms of things. So, this is one, another thing that I wanted to show you again. Let's continue with English, because it's easier for me to show. It's again, how you can change the description here. And of course, you can look for languages here. And if you don't see anything, you can add actually something in your language. So, you go here to the language selector, you click on add language, and then you can add the label, the description, the aliases, and of course, the labels of the input, because this is also very important, that you get actually the translation on this. And then, of course, you can create the implementation. Also, this can be, also here, it's the same. You go here, you look for Tiap, add language, and then you can add everything here. And as you can see, this is actually a composition. It's concatenate many strings from a typed list and an item. So, again, this is not made by, with programming language. This is made by combining functions together. So, this is it from me. I just tried to give you a very general overview of the project. I know that I haven't got you very inside of the project, but I can give you the website to try on yourself. Again, try catalogue, try again, try the functions that exist. And also, what I would like for you to do very much is to make translations into your own language. Allow, just do translation in your languages, because that's the most important part. Unfortunately, I cannot give you a page with all the translations missing, because unfortunately, we don't have that. But what you can do is to manually click on all the functions and translate, 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 because that will help you reuse your content when it's going to be time to create a composition. And then, if somebody is also well versed in programming, maybe try to do, I have a question for you, actually. How does it work, your language? How do you compose plurals? Do you have cases? Do you have, I don't know, because I really don't know anything about your language.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. So, in the case of Tiap, Tiap has about eight different ways of pluralization. And also, Tiap also functions as, like, Tiap has about six definite articles and no indefinite articles. So, and also, our definite articles are not placed at the very beginning, they are placed at the end. So, where we have the arhungs in German would have a bruchk and the k will be the definite article. And so, our, yeah, and we don't have this issue of genders in all the words. So, it is a genderless language. And then also, we don't have these cases of nominative and, you know, stuff like that. So, everything that's, like, for you to be able to pluralize a particular word, you have to know what definite article the singular belongs to, then you can be able to guess which, you know, prefixes you are going to add to the word to give you, because Tiap generally doesn't have suffixes. They are mainly prefixes. They are mainly prefixes, that we usually add for, you know, and there are sometimes that you expect that this very particular word is having a particular definite article, and then it's pluralized, of course, to actually be like this, but then it would still twist and become something else. Yes, so it's regular in some aspects, and then some, regular in some other aspects.
I see. Well, thank you very much, because I, I mean, I, I really don't know anything about your language, and I was trying to understand how a lang, okay, just to give an example then. A language function in Tiap might be about suffixes, suffixes. So what you can do is actually go on the natural language generation functions, see what people have done with suffixes, and try to, to create your own function based on your language, and about that. And I don't know if, it, it also depends, I think, on the, on the function. You can also, if you have already lexims in Tiap, in WikiData, you can call those lexims and manipulate them into, into several other things. But that depends, probably, this depends on, on, on how the, how the function is actually created. Which is, it, let's say, let's say that result may vary. It's a, it can be very different from one, from one function to the other. So, it's a, it's, it's a bit complicated, but it might, it might work. Also, another thing that I forgot to, to see, say, we have Telegram channel that I will share, that I will share with Cambay later. One thing, one word of advice, there is a captcha to be solved, there is a code that you have to enter in order to be accepted in the, in the Telegram group. So, just so you know, otherwise you will be just kicked out after five minutes, because it's, the bot is unforgiving, unfortunately. So, I will share with you all the links later, also the presentation later. And yeah, that's, that's all about me, that, that's all from me. I hope I was clear, I really hope it was clear, because I know this is much more complicated than WikiData. And believe me, I, I was, I was there when WikiData started, and many people told me, but this is a complicated project, I don't, I don't get it. It's, it's, it's too complicated for me. And now we have Wikifunctions, which is even more complicated, and people are even less compared, compared, in understanding that. So, but that's, that's what I do for work, and I hope I was clear. I hope everything was, went well. I hope I answered to the best of my, of my knowledge your, your questions. And thank you very much, Cambay, for answering me, for answering my question about Tiap language. Because this is, this is an opportunity for me to actually get to know more things that I, that I never would have, never thought to know, to know, like, how a particular language works.
Hopefully, by, by next year, if we are able to meet at Wikimania, then we may host some of the books on Tiap language and give it to you.
I seriously, I seriously hope, first of all, to see you in Paris. That depends if they actually give me the possibility to go to Paris, which is absolutely not, not, not a given. I hope that they will, that they will send me to Paris. Otherwise, I'll, I'll see if I, if I can join, let's, let's, let's see about that. But anyway, let's see, let's hope that we can meet in Paris next year. And yeah, let's, let's try to make it as an objective for next Wikimania. To, for us, as a team, to showcase something in Tiap for our presentation at Wikimania.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully. And, and unfortunately, we, we planned our events for next year, and we omitted Wikifunctions, but we can still organize a particular, you know, point in time whereby we would work on Wikifunctions during the year, coming year, so that at the end of the, let's not be that the way we started, the year is not the way we're going to end it as regards Wikifunctions knowledge. And I'm very happy with the Dabani user group, I see they're very busy trying to edit their projects, and, you know, the center with the Ego, Wikimedia, they are also working on their projects. And we won't want to be left behind, truly. So please, just add us up and.
I cannot promise you, I cannot promise you when this is going to happen, because unfortunately, we are constrained by several stuff. It, it is not a simple deployment. There is a reason why we started with Wikifunctions, and it is a particular technical need that we have. And we need to roll out very, very carefully, step by step, every time. But whenever Tiap Wikipedia will be on the next thing, you will know it, because I will send you a message. And I really hope it's gonna be easy, and it's gonna be, hopefully, by the beginning of 2026, hopefully. I, I will try my best to include you as, as soon as possible in our, in our deployment, because you're gonna love it. You're gonna love how to include functions in your language.
No, I'm already loving it. It's already very interesting. Yeah, and, and thank you very much for taking time. And we won't want to take you, to keep, to keep you for long, because I know, I can see the stress on your face, and you just want.
No problem. All the stress, all the stress went away. You, you guys here gave me more energy.
Oh, you were very grateful. And before Sanita will go, please, anyone who has a question, please, to the questions with me, before, before we round up, please, the floor is open for you to ask your questions. And if Kuiet has something to say, please throw it at him.
Yeah, exactly, not, not just questions, also comments, ideas. Tell me that the project is awful, and it's, it doesn't work, I don't know.
It isn't.
Very much, Sanita. Honestly, this is a very awesome presentation. We appreciate you for your time this evening. Thank you so, so much, we appreciate you. And just to let you know, as Cambay has affirmed, we are solidly behind whatsoever this project is trying to achieve. And we, from the Tiap community, Wikimedia's community, we are solidly behind it, and we are going to do our, our best to make sure that this project succeeds. And to, yeah. So from our whole community as well, we'll see how we can also bring in more people who will also contribute to this. Just as Cambay had already said, there are other communities within the Sub-Saharan region here of Africa that are currently very active with the, with the project. So we too, in Tiap, we don't want to be left behind, so we need to, you know, run along. So thank you very much. So I don't know, just as Cambay was saying, is there any question? Because time is almost up, and Luca looks tired, so you need to go and rest. Any question?
Also, also remember that now you have my contact, so whenever you have questions or something, I'll be here.
Awesome, awesome, thank you, thank, thank you. Any, any question from anyone? Okay, so for those who are joining us on the call, or who are, you know, listening to this conversation, the record this session is being recorded, and if you have anything you want to get clarification on, you can always go back and watch the presentation. So we hope you are going to have clarity, but if you have any challenge or question, do work to reach out to us. Either myself, or you reach out to Cambay. We know how to manage to answer some of your questions. And where we got hooked up, we reached out to Luca, to, to help us out. So thank you very much. And at this moment, we thought of wasting much time. I don't think anybody have question, because we two here, we have been busy since morning, Martinelli. So it has not been easy on both sides. So, so thank you very much. Yeah, so thank you very much. So, is there any comments from anyone? Probably not. So Luca, any final comment before we go?
You guys rock. I feel so energized right now, and I love the way you're actually talking about your project. And again, I promise you, I will do my best to include Tiap Wikipedia as much as, as soon as possible. You will not be left behind. Promise.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate.
Cambay, final comment?
Yeah, my final comment is, I just want to appreciate you for the, for the, you know, session today. And for those of us who took time to be present here, please, I want to appreciate all of you for taking your time also. And please, let not be that, after this session, all of us just go and sleep, but please. Let's, also, for those of us who are also here speakers, and you speakers, you can take a cue from what the Tiap project is, you know, thinking of going into. Because at the end of the day, if your project gets out of the incubator, you also start thinking about, you know, doing more work on Wikifunctions and WikiData lexims. And before I say bye-bye, I would ask Sanita, how do you say bye-bye in Italian?
Ciao ciao.
Ciao ciao, yeah. So thank you very much. At least this one, this version is a bit easier compared with the one of Norwegian. But they are all, you know, very, very sweet. So, we in Tiap, we just say genjang, that's like another time for bye-bye. Hmm, so thank you very.
I was it again, sorry? I was it?
Genjang, genjang.
Genjang, genjang.
Genjang.
Okay, so we just want to recognize all of us who are on the call right now. Barbie, Ishaku, thank you. I can see Danjima is just there smiling, enjoying the session. So Dokas, actually, we have seen you, thank you very much. And Eli, Samson, thank you. Favol, Haruna, thank you. Nachali, welcome, just there smiling, thank you very much for joining. And we have seen TFK, Wayham, okay, Praise, thank you very much, everyone, we appreciate you. We acknowledge your time this morning, and we appreciate you. We hope that whatsoever we have been learning over the course of our mentorship program, we will always go back to see how you can put those into action. It's not just all about coming to listen to, you know, see the voices, no, it's beyond that. Go back and try to make that, practicalize all of these things we have learned, so that we can make headway, develop our community at the end of the day. So thank you very much. So from me to you, and on behalf of the Tiap Wikimedia user group, I want to say thank you, and you have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, bye-bye.
Ciao ciao. Genjang, ciao ciao.
Genjang, genjang, ciao ciao.